Dr. Cleveland, are you ready?
This is the first time.
Okay. All right, I want to welcome everybody this evening on this kind of dreary day. I'm going to be sitting in for Ms. Cook today. She is at home, working on her family's health. And I hope everybody at her home gets to feeling better quicker, rather than not so quick, so that we can get back to some kind of normalcy. But I'm going to, I'm going to be running the meeting tonight. Thanks for everybody coming out. First order of business is we're going to do the pledge of allegiance, and that's going to be handled by Mr. Hayden Swope from Harbor High School. If you want to come forward and do that real quick. And then you'll sit back down and we'll do a couple things, and then you'll come back up, okay?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right. Dr. Cleveland, is there anything else that we need to add to the agenda?
No, sir. The agenda is being presented.
Okay. I will entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Second. All right, we have a motion by Mrs. Creek and a second by Mr. Ramos to approve the agenda for the meeting. All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? All right. That brings us to the consent agenda portion of the meeting. The school board minutes and the financial statements and the out-of-district transfers all are under that consent agenda. Are there any questions about any part of that?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion by Mr. Emerson and a second by Mr. Bell to approve the consent agenda. Is there any other discussion about that? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. I'm going to pass it off to Dr. Cleveland now. Okay. Uh-oh. I'd like to introduce to you tonight Mr. Hayden Swope, a student from Harbor High School. He just wanted to be our representative this evening, and he has some special events that I will talk about. I'll really do that. But Hayden, don't forget to introduce your parents and brothers.
Okay, yes, I'm Hayden Swope, and with me is my mom Julie, my dad Patrick, and my brother Carter. They're in the back there. So, yes, I go to Harbor High School, and I am a senior there. And, yeah, so recently, my brother and I competed in conference, state, and overall state for harbor tennis, and we were able to win all three, which is the first time. Yes. Which is the first time in harbor history that anyone has done such a feat, so that is very exciting, and we are both really ecstatic about it. And now, my brother is going to be carrying the team next year and the years ahead, so that is very exciting. So, yes, that is really exciting. And I'm moving forward, I'm going to be looking forward to harbor bowling, which is going to be coming up soon. I'm not as good at that, but it's still very fun. But, yeah, anyway, that's it. All right, thank you.
Wait, wait, okay, wait, you don't get off that easy.
Okay, okay.
We probably got some questions for you. Board, is there any questions? What are you doing next?
Um, after I graduate, I plan on going to the University of Arkansas, and I want to probably go into something around marketing, like doing marketing or something like that. That's kind of the plan. So, yes, I'm in DECA, so I'm kind of working on stuff that'll lead me down that goal, so that's very exciting.
Do you plan on continuing playing?
Um, I don't plan on continuing at the college level, but definitely going to keep playing, like around, like the, just kind of intramurals and stuff like that will be fun.
I heard a stat when they were introducing you guys the other night at the Harbor football game, that you've got a pretty impressive overall record since you've been playing tennis. Do you want to share that?
I would, but I don't really even know what that record is, but it's a pretty good one, I think. I don't know, I think so.
About 58-0 or something like that.
Something around there. I don't really know for sure, but...
Never lost a match, right?
Yes. Uh, yeah, so there you go.
That's awesome. There's not many people you can talk to that have never lost a match, so congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Board, is there anything else? Well, we appreciate you being here, we appreciate the family being here. It was fun to be out there the other night when they recognized you guys as a team, so congratulations for all that. Good job.
Well, thank you so much. Thank you for having me.
Good job.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you if you're ready. We have a report to the public, we do this every year, we have Dr. Kelly Lingard. Dr. Lingard is new to us, as you know, this year, she started in July, because we all have morning questions, we look forward to hearing her presentation.
Good evening, Board, good evening, Dr. Cleveland. This is the annual report to the public. Arkansas rules and regulations require that all districts conduct a public meeting annually to discuss reflective progress and performance. Additionally, goals and opportunities are presented to inform the public of the district's efforts to personalize learning for all children through student-focused initiatives. Our educational focus has three key concepts. It's student-centered, built on the four foundations for student success, and directed by our teaching and learning vision. Our student-centered theme is connected, and our learning models that we use in our district are created to support student choice and meeting their individualized learning Our foundations for student success are four pillars, that you're familiar with. Our teaching and learning vision is, consists of the culture of collaboration, quality lessons that engage students with the district curriculum, our student-centered programs, and our focuses on authentic literacy, numeracy, and our frameworks for student achievement. Our culture of collaboration, you'll see this year especially, we have our district collaboration, which has teacher collaboration, our IF collaborative, which are, is our instructional facilitators, our assistant principal collaborative, and our quality lessons that engage students with technology-rich learning. Our district curriculum is accessible anytime, anywhere. It's aligned to our state standards and our state assessments. Our technology-rich lessons deepen engagement and student learning. We emphasize science, observation, analysis, and problem-solving, as well as the hands-on application within these lessons. We have, as you can see here, many student-centered programs, but I'd like to draw your attention to the largest family literacy program and the largest East program in the nation, as well as the second-largest early childhood and pre-K program in the state. We have more student-centered programs, such as the Advanced Placement Program, the International Baccalaureate Program, concurrent credit programs, which also garner the opportunity to earn an associate's degree by some of our upperclassmen before they graduate. As we continue to develop the culture of literacy, we have developed a research-based program known as Roots. Roots mirrors the Arkansas Reading Initiative. At this point, all of our teachers have gone through the training and are moving into the classroom, onto the classroom assessment piece. You can see that the goals there are to sharpen the focus and strengthen instruction, create a community collaboration, and build a culture of reading. Our authentic numeracy is MapQuest, which is quantitative essentials for students and teachers. We want to create that meaningful mathematic learning experience using the reasoning and problem-solving, which is essential, and today especially, with that meaningful connection for all those students. I come from the math background, so I'm more passionate about the math side of this. The enriched, enriched day-to-day application of math, and it also supports our Everyday Student Succeeds Act and strengthens the parent and family engagement piece. Our framework for advancing student recognition and achievement, I mentioned one of our student-centered programs was the Advanced Placement. Last year, in 2019-20, even though we had COVID going on, we still had 1,731 AP exams taken. Fifty-six percent of those exams scored three or better, and that's a 10% increase from the previous year. Seventeen students in 2020 earned the IB diploma, the International Baccalaureate Diploma, and that's 77% of those who are eligible. We had seven national merit semifinalists, up from four the year before. When we look at how Springdale is reaching in STEAM, the science, technology, engineering, arts, and maths area, we have 28 East Programs, we have robotics teams, maker spaces and cart, maker carts, we have genius hours where students can go in there and investigate things by themselves. Through partnerships, we're able to strengthen our personalization of student learning. Some of our partnerships include the higher education, such as Nwac, University of Arkansas. We've got the Northwest Arkansas Council, Springdale Education Foundation, Career and Technical Education Advisory Partners. Springdale Family Literacy Program supports families learning together in 17 of our schools in the district. You'll notice this looks different than it has in years past. We're doing it virtually. Our enrollment demographics, the percentages are very comparable, I did a comparison this afternoon before I left, to what they were last year. And the total overall enrollment in that first column, the 2000, or 2020-21, is only about 170 different from what it was last year. This slide is the same as that was presented last year, because as you know, with the pandemic, we weren't able to test in the spring, so nothing new on this slide. English language progress. This slide is showing that our English learners are improving. This does include those who were released from the prior performance, and Dr. Smith can answer questions on this slide if you have any questions. Our graduation rates. We have three years of graduation data broken down by four and five-year cohorts. We're including both the four and five-year, because both four and five-year are included in our ESSA plan. I am working currently on submitting the 2020 graduation data for the next year ESSA cycle Springdale School District has 29 schools that are fully accredited by the Arkansas Department and also by Cognia, which is an independent external accreditation agency. So, we are fully accredited. In closing, I think Dr. Cleveland stated it nicely when he said, "We are appreciative of the great individuals and partners who invest their time and resources every day to ensure this district continues to produce great work." Yes, sir?
You said that we have 29 schools that are accredited, I thought we had 31 schools. Are some of those not required?
Nobody calls them the other schools.
Okay.
It doesn't have any eligibility.
Okay, all right, I'm with you there.
The other is pre-K. The other is pre-K.
Okay, yep, got it.
Got it.
It's good to have these folks behind you.
Oh, yes. Are there any other questions?
I'll do it.
I have a question.
Oh, go for it.
On the graduation information?
Yes, ma'am.
For SOI, is that so low because we don't have five-year data yet for some of those? Because that...
The first year they started counting it, that they really didn't have a group of seniors that came through, it was like 11 seniors, two people, so it's very skewed.
Okay.
And then the change in the other schools was because we had a larger number at SOI, so it kind of fluctuated a little bit, so this is very deceiving just because of the change in SOI.
That's, I was wondering, okay. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Lingard.
Thank you.
And I think I went forward backward eight times.
Hudson, while I'm off the podium, you've been selected to find an honor, which is mine, and for the rest of the board and our audience, if you want to be selected for... Well, through my relationship with the State Arkansas School Boards Association, they selected me, the State School Board Association gets one seat at the table of the Safe Schools Committee, which is a Department of Education committee, talking about all things safety. Right now, the big thing is school resource officers. And they nominated me to replace the gentleman that just rolled off of the ASBA Board for that seat at that committee, and we had our first, I had my first meeting last week, virtually, for about an hour and a half, which is torture. I don't know how you guys do what you do, but I appreciate everything that you do, because sitting through a hour to two-hour Zoom meeting is just, just awful. But it was informative, we got to learn about some of the legislation that is, they're trying to shape some legislation, because I guess this upcoming year is a legislative year, and trying to figure out how to get more SROs in the schools, and how to get them funded, and how to define them, and make sure they have all their training and stuff like that. So, for my first meeting, it was, you know, just kind of dipped my toe in the water, but it looks like it's something that's going to be meeting on a quarterly basis, and I think I'll enjoy being a part of it. So, and then in November, or at the State School Board Convention, if, if I don't screw up between now and then, I should be elected to go into the chair process of ASBA. I'll start at the Secretary of Treasury and then work my way up over about five years to hopefully become the president of ASBA if I stay around long enough, which I plan to. So, anyway. That's great. That's where we're at on state level. Congratulations, thanks for participating, I think it's... Mr. Vice President, we also have tonight a construction update. We've got Mr. Hayes, or Mr. Hayes is here, and Mr. White, I thought I saw Jeremy. There he is, okay, hiding in plain sight. Want to get you two gentlemen, like to come forward and talk about the athletic facilities, the bus fueling station, and our elementary in Tawnytown. I think some of you may have seen some updates, some pictures I've sent, Jeremy may have some as well.
Yeah, so I've got a few pictures of the updated construction on several projects. The first one being transportation, yeah.
That was good.
So, that's the, the current state of the new pumps. They've got the asphalt done, we're pretty much just waiting on power, and the rain has got us behind on that. There's a different view of it, it's going to be very nice, the bus drivers are looking forward to it, they're very excited to get fuel there on, on the lot. We've got about four and a half days of construction, we're just waiting on the power company to get the transformer installed. Once they get that done, then we'll have to redo the three-phase panels in the bus shop, and then about a day and a half of hooting, programming the gas boy system, and then priming all the pumps. So, it should move pretty, pretty quick. This is Don Tyson, this is actually at the top of the PAC, looking down onto the stage, so it's, it's changing a lot. And then the GM, they've got all the painting and everything done. We are scheduled to polish that concrete in the end of December, so our crew will go in there and polish all of that out. Springdale High Baseball and Softball Locker Rooms, they've got the brick up, the block and everything, it's looking a lot better. There's another view of it, so they had some rain delays also, so the same crew will be moving over to the Harbor projects, and this is, this is the wrestling area. So, the steel is scheduled to be delivered in the morning at 8:00. So, once it gets there, they'll start standing steel, and you'll see a lot of progress very quickly.
Wrestling and cheer?
Yeah, wrestling and cheer.
Wrestling dance, cheer?
Yeah, yeah. The Harbor Baseball Softball Locker Rooms, the, the brick layers, as soon as they get done at Springdale, they'll move over to Harbor and start putting those walls up, so you'll start seeing some progress over there as well. And that's just a different view of, of Harbor's locker rooms. The Harbor Parking Lot, it's moving forward, they're scheduled for asphalt, starting to get in the base and everything at the end of next week. And then this is at Tawnytown on the new elementary, they've got some footings poured, several piers are poured, so they're getting ready for that steel to, to show up. So, there are just several different shots of the footings getting done. And then this is the Yale Building, that's just west of my office, that's just an outside view of it. There's an inside view looking to the west, and then there's an inside view looking to the east.
And we have a proposal, if you'll look at E, to consider the purchase of the property. The reason why Mr. White had pictures of that, previously sent some information to you about the Yale Building. Jeremy, would you talk about the negotiation process and why we're requesting the board consider the purchase of the property?
Yeah, so we have looked at this property in the past and got with the owners, and recently, he had reached out to me and said he was interested in selling it. The, the company that's leasing it right now has outgrown that facility, so in communication with him, he had got a new appraisal of the end of July, and it came back at $385,000. So, talking with Dr. Cleveland and Kelly, you know, we were interested in it, so I communicated with the, the current owner, and we agreed at $360,000, so that's about $81 a foot, square foot for that building. And...
Is there any property to be...
Yeah, yeah, we own...
We own rail.
And there's actually a, a big grassy area behind the Yale Building that, that butts up to our warehouse, so that would give us the option in the future, if we had to add on to the warehouse, we, we could go to the west, or we could actually come out of the back of this Yale Building and go to the north.
Is there something about eight feet between this building and our building?
Yeah, from my office to that office is about eight feet. Yeah.
The thought process, Mr. Hudson, is if the board continues along the path of maybe relinquishing some of our, or disposing of some of our property, including the Washington Building, having the food service program close, close to the warehouse where the food is stored, the commodities are stored, is a really smart idea or quality investment, and to have a final home for the food service program. So, I would request the board discuss and potentially approve the, the purchase of the property. If you have any further questions, we'll be happy to answer everything that we know.
No, I mean, I think basically our long-term plan and our discussions we had in our work session two months ago, or however long it was, that the Washington Building, having a suitable place to move what's in there, and then the proceeds of that obviously would offset what we're going to pay you for this one. It's a really natural fit for the long-term plan of bundling up some of those properties that we talked about to get rid of. I'll make a motion to proceed with his purchase.
Second. Do we have any more discussion about this? Any other questions? Okay, so we have a motion by Mr. OMB and a second by Mr. Emerson. If there's no other discussion, all those in favor of this? Anybody opposed? Awesome. It's like we're going to buy us a new building. All right. Fantastic. Thank you. We'll, we'll execute the offer and acceptance, and we'll go through a title company, and as in the past, very likely you all will have, somebody, one or two of you will have to sign, so we'll get that underway. Thank you so much, I think that certainly expands our opportunities to be more efficient in the future. Thank you. Next, we have something interesting. Been talking to Mr. Mitchell Johnson for years now, Mitchell years ago, and he's the Director of Ozarks Electric President, believe, and he has a young man with him, they've been talking to me about solar power and the use of solar power and savings. So, Mr. Johnson, I'd love to turn it over to you, and you just introduce the concept to the board.
You bet. Thank you, Dr. Cleveland, it's an honor to be here. As a graduate of Springdale High School, it's a, it's a pleasure to, excuse me, sorry about that, it's a pleasure to be in front of you, and I know what y'all do on a daily bas- basis, really matters to our students, matters to our community, and it is very much appreciated, but, but I am Mitchell Johnson, the President/CEO of Ozarks Electric, and I have with me today Derek Redford, and Derek is Vice President of Member Relations at Ozarks, and also I've got Matt Ir- Matt Irvin, he's the Vice President of Operations with Today's Power. Today's Power is, is one of the leading solar development organizations in, in this region. Today's Power is owned by the Electric Cooperatives of Arkansas, so Ozarks Electric is actually one of the owners of Today's Power, and we'd like to just introduce a, a concept and a partnership with the school district, with Ozarks Electric, Today's Power, and the school district to potentially substantially lower your energy cost for the district. So, I'll just turn it over to Matt to go over some of the, the details of the concept. So, Dr. Cleveland, thank you.
Thank you. Presentation, Mr. Johnson, we've explored now the topic about that concept, I just wanted you to have these. Thank you.
Thank you, Mitchell, Dr. Cleveland, Board, thank you for the opportunity to share with you, and I want to be respectful of your time, so I think Derek's handing out just some information. I'll, I'll start by expanding on who we are as Today's Power and what we do. We were formed in 2014. Our mission was to serve our 17 distribution cooperatives who own us and, and provide solar, a solar option for them, and take advantage of the tax credits, which they cannot. So, through that process, we've, over our short lifespan, we've installed over 40 megawatts worth of systems at Today's Power. One thing that sets us apart, when, when you look at the solar industry, you typically got three facets. One is the developer, one is what, what they call the EPC, engineering, procurement, construction, that's basically the general contractor who builds the systems, and then one's the owner. At Today's Power, we, we fill all of those gaps, so there's no, we don't develop, sell it, we don't build it, sell it, we pretty much develop it, build it, own it, and operate it. So, this is one thing that sets us apart from, from what a lot, a lot of larger solar developers do. So, I'm happy to also, also, at... So I'm happy to also, at, at any point, make sure, if, if you have any questions, feel free to ask. So we've completed more large-scale solar projects in Arkansas than any other solar developer. We've got good experience in the, you know, making sure we develop a structure that works for you. We share the same mission because we're owned by the cooperatives. We share the same mission as we're here to serve the members, you. And I think there's certainly ways that we could achieve that with Springdale School District and, and help you find some savings on your utility bills. We've done projects in Arkansas, Oklahoma, a small one in Tennessee. We're currently working on a, a pretty large portfolio in Kansas. And so we've, one of our largest projects is, is right here in Northwest Arkansas, where it was a trilateral agreement between Today's Power, Ozarks Electric and the city of Fayetteville. We installed 12 megawatts worth of solar. The city of Fayetteville is the off-taker for those 12 megawatts of solar. We coupled that with about 12 megawatts, 24 megawatt hours of storage, which that's a lease agreement between Today's Power and Ozarks Electric. So just kind of, what we do is we can offer you an arrangement to where we could come in on your property or on another designated area, depending upon your appetite for how much you would like to get into solar. We can come in, we'll engineer it. Well, let me back up. If you're interested, we start with a complete bill analysis. So we, we'll want to determine, okay, what's your level of interest, right? We'll start with a complete bill analysis where we'll look at a 12-month history of each meter that we would want to associate with the solar facility. We would then break that down into an, an analysis of savings. So what we would look at is the potential property, where you might be interested in locating the solar facility, what it would cost us to build on that facility, what it would cost us to interconnect that facility to the grid, and then what it would cost us to operate that facility for a 20-year contract. Okay? And then what we would do is we'd bring that back to you in the form of a kilowatt hour price. And then once we get to that, that point in the conversation, that, that 20-year kilowatt hour price, another thing that sets TPI apart is we don't apply any escalators. So a couple of things we do in the analysis. One, we don't apply any escalators to our rate, from, for our rate to you. What we tell you today is what you'll pay in year 19 and year 20 for the energy from the solar field. We also, in our analysis, we don't apply escalators to the current utility rates. We think it's important to make it work today. If it works today at the rate you're paying today and the rate that we can offer today, then we can assume that, you know, things would just get better for you in the future. So we, we try to take a very conservative approach to that. So just keep on that line. What we do is if you agreed at that point, we establish what your savings would be, maybe what the recommended size would be. There would be no upfront capital on your part. If, if we built it on your land, we would execute also a lease easement agreement that would just give us rights to access that property for the life of the contract, to operate, own and operate the equipment. So that lease easement agreement would come first and then the second would be a solar power services agreement, okay? That's where we establish the kilowatt hour price. And then you would be contractually obligated to pay Today's Power for that 20-year life of the contract, that rate for every ounce of energy that we produce out of that facility. Now, I don't want that to feel scary because going back to the evaluation portion of it, we're going to show you what your current consumption is and then what we're going to generate. So we're going to make sure we don't ever generate. You, you'll never purchase power that you don't need. You'll simply be replacing your utility power with solar power at different rates.
At a lesser rate.
At a lesser rate. That's correct.
And the, so for example, I don't want to get ahead of you.
No, you're fine.
Just example here, Sonora, you would only build panels enough to feed that school?
No, sir.
Or would you have excess power?
Right. So...
Could other, I mean, are you going to use that other power for other?
Yes, sir. So we can aggregate as many meters as you'd like. Again, it goes back to what's your appetite? What would you like? You know, we, we, we talk about it in bites, right? Some people are really comfortable and they want to go all in. Some people say, hey, let's just take a bite. Let's, let's get into it. Let's see what we save. Let's, let's make sure we're comfortable with everything and that's, that's the goal. Make sure you're comfortable, make sure you're served well and do more later. You have those options. The, the layout that we provided you was kind of what we would consider the starting point. It works well for the grid. It allows us some battery storage options with this size system. And I think it's maybe a third of your usage somewhere in, in that neighborhood. So you're not all-in to a new technology, something that maybe you, you want to just navigate slowly into. But what we would do, that, that school where it's located does not have to consume all that power. So we would pick your utility bills and we would do a, an aggregation of meters to that facility.
Plus, Mr. OMB, that, that pond is no longer there, so they could actually add some additional panels if necessary, if the board was interested. And there's additional property in the back, too. Y'all have been on that, so. It's just a way of maybe trying to figure out a way to not only pay for the property, but overall save potentially into the millions of dollars for the district in the utility bill.
Correct.
But you could power the whole, this is, you said this is not, this would be a bike, I guess?
Conceptually, that, that, what you're looking at is about a 2.4 megawatt system. It would, I'm assuming it would. I haven't looked at that particular school's usage, but it more than likely would offset that whole facility. Yeah. And then it would, then you would start netting out to your other meters as specified.
A quick question.
Yes.
So when you hear of solar, you also hear about being able to sell energy back to the grid?
Mm-hmm.
Is that possible? Is that a possibility with these systems?
So, right. So what happens, under this system, you would never sell power back because you've got quite a substantial load. So we're, we're very conservative on our starting point, right? You've certainly got enough load to credit and not ever sell back. But you, to answer your question, yes, you can. The best way to approach that in any design is to make sure you net out on a 12-month basis. And really, our goal is usually, if, if, if we've got an account that's even close, we want to be 80 to 90% of the total usage. Because you get the most value of that energy if you consume every drop that we produce. We, we don't want to overproduce and you're buying energy that you don't necessarily need. So just to kind of wrap up the, the, the potential structure, again, you own the property. We would have a lease and easement agreement to that property. We would build the system. Once we went into commercial operation, we would establish that date. And then you would simply just be switching a portion of your bills from Ozarks to Today's Power at a lesser rate. And it, it, it really is that simple. Your, your biggest risk, your worst-case scenario in this structure is you pay what you're paying currently. For Today's Power, we own the equipment and we operate the equipment. So we're incentivized because you're paying us for what the system produces. If I don't keep that system operational, then you don't pay me. So that's your, your reassurance that, you know, we're not going to build something and just walk away and it's going to turn into a, a landfill out there. We recover over 20 years of the contract, what it costs us to build the system.
The request is just to explore, to see. I didn't want to step out and go down this path and without your approval to, to explore it and see what kind of savings we could potentially create.
So would it be something like district-wide or just certain schools that would be on the solar system?
When we started talking, they have the ability to go out and purchase land and do that. And we kind of pay for the land and they, at the end of the 20 years, they're landing their stuff. Well, I thought, we've got some land, especially some land behind Sonora. And I offered that up to see if it's part of the grid system. It worked out that it was perfect because all we're using it for really is to cut hay, right? And as a cross-country course, we can still use it as a cross-country course. We can still, the schools can still use some of those ponds as ecosystem reviews and all. So it doesn't impact any of that. It was a way to figure out, how can we get our properties that we do have to pay us back and to increase our ability to recover some dollars? Mr. Hayes is going to have a lot of questions. He's going to want to make sure that all those pennies match. So he's a, he's a really good person to, to knock heads with in regard to dollars. So I'm sure he'll, he'll get to review that. But I didn't want to start down the road without your approval to at least look at it, so.
Definitely go through the build-out process so we can review it.
Yeah, we're excited about the Sonora property. It felt, it fits extremely well within the grid that we have out there. And I mean, the, the capacity and, and it actually will benefit Ozarks by putting that there. And one of the things that we want to be able to do to make this a win-win-win, not for the school district, but for Ozarks and our members and for TPIs, to build some battery storage behind that. And what we will be able to do with the battery storage, once that energy is stored, we'll be able to dispatch that energy at really high prices, price points within the summer times or whatever. And that really makes us to be able to reduce our costs from a summer peaking demand cost perspective. So it would be a win-win-win for everybody. And I think that's the true definition of a partnership, if we can do, do something that benefits all parties, so.
Anyway, no more questions. Thank you so much, gentlemen, for your time. I know you're, you're taking time out of your, your evening with your families to be here, so. Thank you so much. I have lost a piece of paper that I just had. I have lost a piece of paper that I just had. Okay, found it. I think that'll be a good potential review. See what we can do to do some savings. Looking forward to starting that process.
It's worth going down the path. I mean, just check it out, if nothing else, so.
Well, over 20 years, we could potentially save in the millions.
How many, how many of our schools are actually Ozarks versus Sopco? Are they? Okay, I didn't realize that.
Okay, item G, Mr. Vice President, is Consider Property Disposal Timeline. I had hoped to have our appraisals back from Mr. Reed by now, but I don't. So expecting those this month at some point, sometime. So my, my thought process would be to have several steps. Step one, receive the appraisals back from Mr. Reed, hopefully by December, distribute those appraisals to you for your individual review. And then step, step two. Step three, after you select which properties, after the review of the appraisals, which ones you want to dispose of, advertise for those potential properties to be disposed of. Then you've got a couple of, of options. You can either, one, contract with the realtor to guide that disposal of the process or we can establish a date to select bids based on the minimum or the, the appraised value, that'd be the minimum bid. And then at a regular meeting or at any meeting you decide, any date you decide to open those bids, you can do that. You have the right to accept or reject any and all bids. And we'd have that in our advertisement as well. So there's kind of a, I need you to decide for us if you would like to, for us to handle the disposal of the properties after you select which ones you would like to dispose of or if you want to hire an agent. That's kind of the, the question of the evening. And then how you want to dispose the property in the end. I think financially, it makes the most sense because we can handle, we have an expert realtor basically on your board who could help guide us and I, I'm sure he wouldn't charge. He's never charged for anything. Can't charge, so.
Camille's hot, doesn't it?
There's a, yes, absolutely. Just do it in full. Mr. Emerson, just do it right here. So I think the thought process that I've had, knowing the conservatism of the board and making sure that we utilize each penny that we have in our possession, to potentially go through and us handle it internally and allow you to open the bids and decide which properties you want to sell based on bid. Open to any discussion that you would have.
What is the fee on that?
No, there wouldn't be a fee.
No, but if, if a...
It's a big fee to save.
Yeah, a professional real estate person came in, it'd be...
So, so I think out of the, if we're talking about the group, groupings of properties we left out in our work session, we probably have two or three of those that are easy to sell. There's a couple that may not be easy. You may have to work a little harder internally on a couple of those pieces of property. I see no need to spend any money trying to market and sell those properties.
I've, I've already been contacted on three of them.
Yeah.
Really?
Mm-hmm. Okay.
That's my opinion.
Yeah, I think that's the way to go.
It's pretty much right. I just can't see you down there, so.
Yeah, I think the same.
Well, I guess maybe not necessarily action, just guidance. If you wanted to, to, to vote on the process, that's fine, but I don't think it's necessary. I think it's just marching orders for me and marching orders from the team on what the next steps are. I have in there the property disposal policy and as you can see, it's very simple.
So you get the appraisals in, put it in the newspaper for three weeks?
Well, I would get the appraisals in, send those to you. And then decide, make sure that I have the right ones that we advertise for. We'll put them in the, in the paper for the appropriate length of time, two to three weeks, I believe. And then maybe in the December or January meeting, you could, you could open the bids or you could have a special meeting to open the bids. You could even do it at noon one day because it's not personnel. These meetings have to be after five o'clock because they could potentially do with personnel. Any business items can take place at any time at a specially called meeting, so. But that would be...
And do we, do we set the price? Do we set the price? Do we go off the appraisal price?
Well, you, it's your property, so you have the ability to set the price, certainly as a collective group. But the appraised value at least sets fair market value.
Sure.
And that means you can take that or above.
So in the newspaper ad, just do we put, we have a property at 123 Easy Street that we want a minimum bid of $50,000 for?
Yes. And that the bids will be taken till X time on certain date and will be opened at...
Got you.
Whatever date.
And then we can choose to take the bid that's given or we can say, ah, that's not going to work.
Yes.
Do it again.
Oh, you said you've been contacted about three, are there four altogether or is it? How many are we talking about?
Well, there's the Bayori property, there's Fishback, there's the, the Grange Building. We've got the property over at Elm Springs.
In Washington.
In the Washington Building.
That's five.
But we didn't, we did not drive to the Bayori property that day. We saw all the other ones, but that...
Correct. And I do believe Mr. White's been contacted by someone who lives next to the property that's very... to the property that's very interested. At least a portion of it, kind of dog legs up on that deal. So there's interest out there.
I think that's the way to go.
Okay. Right. Then if that's how you'd like to do it, I will be happy to partner with Mr. Hayes and Miss Clay so we can march forward on this and do it in the right way and get you as, as much money as we can. Need to make sure Mr. Hayes works, you see. He's not busy enough as it is. I'm just kidding, Mr. Hayes, very busy. Okay. Anything else? Mr. Hudson?
No, I think that's good.
Okay. For my last portion, the zoning options, this is simply a start, a point of beginning to start discussions about zoning for the new Tonny Town Elementary School. I know that the idea originally began of thinking, okay, since we have so much growth happening in the West, we're going to open that school in August. Originally, we thought about having it be a school of choice so it could be close to full. But looking at the rooftops, reviewing all of the new construction that's happening in, in the West, looking at its part of the, the wave of population growth that's happening in the West, this school will be full in the next five to 10 years certainly. And we need to provide some relief to Shaw. Shaw continuously has properties that are developing in that area. And Young is a small footprint right now, and yet it could have a little growth. We've looked at saying that in general terms, everything west of I-49 and everything south of 412 would become the new zone. But there's a little bit of a, I guess, a fly in the ointment in that. When you take a one-mile circle or radius and you think about people that may live in Tonny Town proper, whose children may want to go to that school and they're less than a mile away, going to Young or to Shaw may not make sense for those families. So we were thinking about how do you adjust to make sure the families that are intending to go to the school can. When we've opened schools in the past, like Nap, there were some moms and dads who maybe had siblings, their kids that were in the school, that they wanted to be able to continue to go in the school, and we've allowed that to happen. So there are some unique circumstances that happen. We don't force everyone to go to the new school. You know what I mean? So our effort will be, will be strong in order to provide a school that they'll want to attend, but at the same time be personal in a way that we can identify unique circumstances for transfer. Now, if someone didn't want to go to the school, they wanted to stay at their zone school or at their home school that they currently are in, but may not be their zone school, they would have to provide transportation. That's been the trade-off. Anyway, this is first blush at what the zone may look like. As you can tell, the green area would be the new Tonny Town zone. And it would feed into Hellster. The original thought is that it would feed into Helen Tyson. But when we changed the zone from Elmdale to Helen Tyson this past year, if we zoned this school into Helen Tyson, it would make Helen Tyson way too big. So the thought process is to allow this Tonny Town school to continue to feed to Hellster. Of course, it's certainly your call as we move forward, but it's, it's a good conversation starter this evening. I don't know, Mr. Hudson, there had been discussion about maybe having a work session in the next two or three months. This may be a good conversation piece to dive deeply and try to figure all of that out. So we certainly don't want to do it in isolation. If we know it's your, your decision, we want to provide you the information that you need in order to make that decision. The best.
Is this green area that, for the new Tonny Town school, is it, is it Shaw and Young right now?
Yes. Basically, it's the, it's Shaw and Young currently. You know, when you start looking at numbers, and I don't know if you can see those numbers there or not, but it drops Shaw and Young into the 400 and 500 range. Well, obviously, over a period of a couple of years, those numbers will continue to increase. Shaw is one of our larger schools and it can accept quite a few more kids. I'm not out in the Shaw region all the time, but I do know house top, rooftops are continuously going up. Mr. Emerson, I know you're out there every day. You might be able to report for us what you see, since that's your stomping ground.
No, I mean, you're right. It's, there are a lot of rooftops. But one thing I noticed was a lot of the new rooftops in apartments off of 112 look like the new Tonny Town school grabs those areas.
Again, we just blanketly threw something down on roads.
Well, I'm not saying it's good or bad. I'm just, I mean, it makes sense to me.
Mr. Hayes, if you don't mind, would you go to the microphone so people that are streaming? Mr. Hayes has done a good job helping coordinate a lot of this.
I apologize for not having it on the screen. But the slide that you're looking at, I want to make sure I'm looking at the same thing. It's pink across the top, green across the bottom and yellow. Is that the one you're looking at?
That's correct.
Yeah, that's it. Okay, we're talking about the, the park to the west of 49. And you can see there's three zones there. The top would be Shaw, the yellow or the middle would be Young, and the bottom would be the new school at Tonny Town. Yes, part of that green that you see was zoned for Young and part of the green was zoned for Shaw. So it's taking those two school zones and dividing into three, three pieces where it was to.
Probably good on Hellster in as far as numbers. Are we still packed to the gills there or?
We, we moved 115. That's my memory. Fifth graders to Helen Tyson this year, and just about all of them went. So it provided quite a bit of relief to Hellster. We even allowed some transfers into Hellster this year, which has been not the norm. I think they're around seven-ish this year, and they've been as many as 1,009 that I can recall. So COVID has certainly played a part in that. But for the most part, it was the, the moving of the zone from Elmdale that provided the relief. And Helen Tyson needed and had a capacity for additional students. So.
Yeah, a couple of our smaller elementaries were feeding into Helen Tyson, and they only had four schools. And then a couple of our larger schools were feeding Hellster and they had five. So by moving Elmdale, it kind of balanced that. So now Elm, now Helen Tyson has five. And with the addition of Tonny Town, Hellster would once again have five.
Are the Tonny Town numbers the 438? Is that an estimate or is that?
That's if all the students that lived, live in this zone attended, attended there. Yes.
So just as a conversation starter, I know that a couple of you have, and I have had some emails back and forth and some conversations about it. And I hope I've been able to provide some of the original maps and things. Mr. Ramos added for the original maps today. I provided elementary, middle, junior high and high school to all of you. I don't know if you received those, but I think they're quality and high resolution that Mr. Guadini provided for me this afternoon. So again, conversation starter, we wanted to make sure it was in the minutes and that if people in the community of Tonny Town and in the zone of Shaw and Young were interested in having additional input and review, they were in the minutes and it's out there for review and for a conversation for our community. Continue any questions or additional conversation? Are we good to go?
We're good.
Okay.
Perfect. Thrilling.
All right. Thank you so much. And we'll try to continue to have good information come to you and I'm, we'll certainly be responsive to any of your questions. All right. What's next on our agenda? Dr. Smith?
And Dr. Cleveland, Board, just a little bit of information. As you know, at the beginning of the school year, we opened opportunities or learning models for our families. And we asked parents to choose a learning model and, and stick with it through the semester. As you know, we're coming to the end of the semester, and so now we're trying to figure out what families are still needing. This is specifically talking about the virtual students at Don Tyson School of Innovation. So just an update, November 2nd, we sent out a letter to all parents asking them if they were interested in staying at DTSOI or if they were thinking about going back to their zone school. The information should be in on November 13th, so we have a few more days before we have final numbers. December 4th is when we will be notifying the parents of the transfers. Currently, VIA has about 2,800 students. That might be a little bit low. They have closer to 3,000 that are actually, a couple hundred of the students are using both blended and virtual classes. But currently we have 205 that are requesting to return to face-to-face back at their buildings. It's broken down by elementary, middle, junior, high and high school. And we actually have 30 students that are requesting to move from face-to-face to virtual. So that is about anywhere between a seven or eight percent change in Don Tyson School of Innovation VIA program. And the reason it's so important to get this information out now is because that means not only is it a shift with students, but it's going to possibly be a shift in personnel, which Mr. Hayes is looking forward to. Anyway, do you have any questions?
One thing seems to always come back to you, Kelly. I don't know what's going on with that.
No, this is really a team effort. And I just want to say that this has not just been a VIA thing. We have our principals all across that are working with VIA to make sure that transitions in and out have been smooth for families. Any questions? All right. Thank you.
Good evening, Board. I will be presenting this evening for Ms. Fink, her item. And really, we were just going to give a quick update to let you know. I know we've presented to you in the past about our instructional facilitator collaborative and bringing them together and working towards our collective goals and reflecting on our shared beliefs. This past Wednesday on November 4th, we were able to have 19 assistant principals come in and spend the day with us doing an assistant principal edition of our Springdale Collaborative. And it was a very special day where we allowed them just to reconnect with their inner instructional leader and our goals and mission and take a break from some of the things that they've been focused on that are COVID-related in their building. And so they got to hear from Dr. Cleveland and then from our curriculum and instruction division and just spend time reflecting and connecting with our goals. And so we're excited to have the AP edition up and running. And for my piece, I have a very exciting announcement to recognition. Yay! I know we're clapping already. We're so excited. And one thing I want to say before I bring these two amazing women up here to be recognized is that our fine arts programs, specifically band and choir, have faced so much adversity with COVID and how to modify and adapt our programs to allow our students to continue to not only participate but strive for that level of excellence in those programs. And I just want to commend every single band and choir director across our entire district for persevering through all of this. And I want to thank Damon, Donell for kind of leading that at the helm and ensuring that all of our students continue to have the opportunity to participate and to excel in the things that they love and that make them want to come to school. And so on that note, I would like to invite Ms. Millie Peters and Ms. Rachel Cornet to come to the front and stand just kind of on either side of me. While they're coming down, I want to let you know that they have both received tremendous recognition just recently. Ms. Millie Peters was recognized as the Arkansas Choir Directors Association Regional High School Choir Director of the Year. And so we're very excited for her and for Springdale High School. And then we have Ms. Rachel Cornet, who was also recognized as the Arkansas Choir Directors Association Regional Junior High Choir Director of the Year. And so Springdale just cleaned house. And so Lakeside specifically. And so before, I'm going to allow you the opportunity to ask these amazing ladies some questions. But before we do that, I jokingly said last time, I think we had the Arkansas Librarian of the Year here from Lakeside. And I said they hit the trifecta. Well, now I can't say the trifecta anymore because now they have the Junior High Choir Director of the Year. And so, yeah, Lakeside's been cleaning house. And so do you, I welcome you to take the opportunity to ask these two ladies anything that you would like.
Board, any questions? Well, I'm just curious, what, what is the, I mean, I don't know, but what's the most crazy thing that's different about this year versus past years? I know 2020 and COVID is just nuts, but what's, what's the biggest challenge, I guess, maybe?
I think I, for, for me personally, and I'm afraid she'll answer it, she wants to answer it, but singing with these masks on is, is a big challenge. It's very hard to teach singing and expression and proper placement of what you're supposed to do with your mouth to create the most beautiful ah vowel and things like that whenever you can't see what they're doing behind the mask. So that has been the biggest challenge, I think. The kids are happy to be singing. You know, when we started school this year, we weren't sure if we were going to be able to sing at all. So, and then we thought we were going to be singing outside the whole time. So the best news that we could have gotten was that we were just going to be able to sing, period. So we're still singing, they're singing, we're all singing. It just, it just looks different and it sounds a little different too this year.
Yeah, and I would agree the same thing that, especially teaching junior high, but for any age, being so spread apart in the classroom. Because you know, when you think about when you're singing in a group, you feel that comfort of like being together and your voice is not really sticking out because you're together singing. So being really spread apart in the classroom as, you know, a 14-year-old girl learning her music, you want that comfort of being close together and blending in with people around you. So it's just encouraging them to still sing out even though you don't feel as safe in that, you know, singing environment. So that has been the, the challenge. But we always joke with them about how, how much they're projecting through the mask, six feet apart. When we do get to sing together, it's going to be this wall of sound because they're just so used to protecting so much on the, in the classroom. And same thing that Millie said, this year, the, the kids are so grateful to be at school and to be singing. And so no matter what you ask them to do, you know, whether it's singing masks that they've ordered for them or six feet apart and we're sanitizing everything, we're singing for 30 minutes and we go outside and we come back in and they're like, yes, sure, whatever you want us to do, we'll do it. And we're just so happy to be at school, which makes our job so much easier.
That's awesome. It's good to hear.
You can only sing for 30 minutes at a time. And then we have to leave the room for 20.
Summer.
I have another question. This may be for Damon.
How do you do it?
Are they continuously monitoring and, and looking, updating these guidelines that the state keeps coming up with for band and choir? Is that something that could be changing or are we stuck with this or what?
I, I don't want to say we're stuck with it. I think there is consideration being made right now about some other reports that have just come out of IC and playing instruments. I think there's a consideration that they've been forward. It's really in the, in the man's department that helps, you know, I'd love to be able to.
Yeah. Well, I haven't gotten to hear this, the fire scene, but I've been at Springdale and at Harbor and seen both bands perform. And Springdale did excellent. I was at Harbor most recently and they, I mean, they blew it out of the water with their last performance. They got a saxophone guy over there that can just absolutely tear it up. I don't remember what his name is, but he's, he's some kind of awesome. So even with those covers, which I think are just ridiculous, it's, it's awesome. If you guys ever get to take your mask off, they're going to tell me what, what might happen. So.
Like you're going to have to be like, whoa, okay.
So kudos, kudos for doing what you're doing.
So is there a next step for you guys as far as this is a regional? Is there like a state or a national?
Well, in a normal year, yes. There is an all-state clinic that we have in February. So generally, these, those of us who are, are chosen as Director of the Year for our regions are then put in a, to the next level per state. So then we're voted on by the entire state. So this is just our region. Our state is divided into six regions. In here, we do it all by country. So in, in a normal year, that would be happening in February at the all-state clinic. In a normal year, that would be happening in February at the all-state clinic, but we don't.
Okay.
We're not sure.
We'll just enjoy this for now, and we'll see what comes later.
Yeah.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Good job.
Well, I hate to follow that exciting news with a report on COVID numbers, but here we are. So the information I will provide to you today is similar to the information that we talked about last month. This is meant to be a supplement to the daily and weekly reports that we publish on our website, and I think Dr. Cleveland keeps you all informed of that information as it comes in. So the data this month is from October 12th through November 8th. November 8th was Sunday. We had to cut it off Sunday night, so we could do some calculation. And you'll see that during that time period, there were 250 students and staff that were positive. That represents 1.1% of the approximately 22,800 students and staff that are on campus. Remember when we did this data last month? We subtracted out the virtual students as irrelevant for these purposes, because they're not coming on campus. 76 staff members were positive during this time period. That's 2.6% of the 2,900 on-campus staff members. And then that leaves 174 positive students, or 0.87% of the 19,900 on-campus students. As we talked about last time, we looked at the number of probable close contacts. That's the PCC acronym there. You're probably all very familiar with that at this point. But there were 1,106 students and staff identified as PCCs by the district. So when we're doing that, we are looking strictly at the students and staff that have been on campus, tested positive, and then we're trying to trace their circle of influence that are students. That's what we report to the state. So of those, 16 of those people that were identified as PCCs later tested positive. Now, we talked about the limits of this data last time. Not everybody goes and gets tested. There is also the possibility that we don't identify all of the PCCs with 100% accuracy. So there may be some connections out there that would make that number a little bit higher, but based on the data that we have, 16 of those PCCs tested positive, and that represents 1.4% of the PCCs. And just to break down what we see as the transmission, that represents two staff-to-staff, 11 student-to-student, and three student-to-staff. So in case you're wondering where, what data I reported last month, this is the information from the October report. Keep in mind, the October report was the first time that we had looked at this, and it represented from August 24th through the Sunday before your October board meeting. So a little bit longer period of time. You'll see the numbers and percentages, along with the cumulatives there. Basically, what we're seeing is our numbers increasing in lockstep with what the state and regional numbers increase. So basically, our school district is a reflection and not immune to increases that are happening statewide. Really, up until the last week or so, it was relatively steady, and then over the last week or so, we've started to see increases in cases, just like the state is seeing increases in cases. Now, this information, last month was the first time I presented this to you, because it had just started. So the Department of Education is now asking all school districts to report, I believe they do it each week on either Thursday or Friday, report this information to them. I don't know what it's exactly used for, but it is interesting information. So our nursing department compiles this information each week. We've talked about at some point the difference between isolation and quarantine. So isolation means that you are sick and you are removing yourself from others so that they don't get sick. Quarantine means you have been exposed, so you're removing people from others so that they don't get sick. We okay on that definition? And so you'll see, the numbers have been relatively steady until this last week, and you'll notice a large spike in students in quarantine. You know, when we have cases that, especially on our secondary campuses, that actually have PCCs, and when I say actually have PCCs, let me explain that a little bit. When someone tests positive, when we're looking at PCCs, we're looking back 48 hours before their symptoms started, or 48 hours before they were tested. So there are times that that look-back period either hits on a weekend, so there's no PCCs, or it hits on a time period that that person was already quarantined, so there are no PCCs. So there was a time period that we were getting lots of cases with zero PCCs, for whatever reason. But when we do have cases with PCCs, especially on the secondary campus, we usually see, I would say on average, about 20. Sometimes it's higher. So when you just start rolling through those, it can get up pretty high. These numbers also reflect outside exposure. So these are the staff in quarantine and students in quarantine that they're reporting to us, hey, we're in quarantine, and it has nothing to do with the school. We were exposed at a family gathering, we were exposed at a social event, and so.
So they're making that determination and notifying the district?
Yes, that's right. We ask anybody who has been exposed, well, obviously, a student's going to be missing school, and a staff is going to be missing work, and so we have a separate exposure reporting form. So that's not for anybody who's tested positive. That's just, hey, I've been exposed, I'm staying home for this period of time. And so these numbers include the outside exposures and the outside cases. So this is really a more comprehensive picture when you look at it. I will say, I continue to be absolutely amazed at how well our students, staff, principals, everybody is adjusting to this process that no one has experienced or was prepared for. You probably already know this, but Damon Donnell is an efficiency master, and he continues to work and work at this process and look at this process with our nursing department to see how we can make it more efficient. We actually had a meeting today to see, okay, where do we need to tweak? So we're continually adjusting our process to make it as quick, efficient, and as not burdensome as possible on everybody. So I'll continue to, obviously, we'll continue to do the weekly and daily numbers, and then we'll continue to present this information to you each month. Do y'all have any questions?
No, I just, I really want to say, I get caught up in the gloom and doom sometimes of listening to the bad news, and we really have to take this as really, really good news. I mean, look at the diversity of our school, the culture of our school, and the size of our school, and to have numbers like this, I mean, really going into it, guys, I thought it would be more problematic. And I think really, not to discount the seriousness of getting sick, but the quarantine process, and when you have staff out and you're trying to cover for staff, is really difficult. And I live with someone who's dealing with that, and it is tough. So we've got to be super thankful for these numbers. I mean, it's amazing, really. As gloom and doom as everything is, look at the bright shining star of Springdale School District, managing this tough, tough business here. I just want to say that, that's great. I mean, even though it is serious, and I get the implications of being sick, but with our population, I think we're doing fantastic.
Yeah, I think you're right, and I'm the same, is sometimes I get bogged down in it, because several of us live and breathe it almost every day. One thing that we have talked about is that we do, we feel that people are having the COVID fatigue, and so looking for ways to encourage and continue to push on so that we can keep the numbers where they are and manageable. Any other questions?
I think we should also say a huge thank you to our staff and teachers and all the support personnel that are making this happen.
Yes, yes.
Like, I know everyone feels overwhelmed, and like, you know, even just dealing with the quarantines is really hard for a teacher who's trying to continue on with teaching and dealing with different learning models and all that. So I just, I'm very grateful to everyone that's making this happen.
Yes, absolutely, everybody has been amazing. Okay, thank y'all.
I don't think our education association representative's here today.
She texted me a few minutes ago and said she'd try to make it over, but they're involved in a national AEA meeting, and so she said if they couldn't make it, she understood.
I do have a question about the learning model, the blended options that we have, and it's come up a couple of times in some circles of conversation. We have, correct me if I'm wrong, we have a blended option that is a Monday, Wednesday, Friday, and we have a Tuesday, Thursday option. Is there any consideration to go into maybe one option?
Yes, that's been reviewed.
That may be a loaded question, but.
It could take a long time to really discuss about it. We did talk to the student forum, and I asked the question, because it appeared that Tuesday, Thursday students had a higher failure rate than the Monday, Wednesday, Friday students.
I think some of the conversation is there's a large gap between Thursday and coming back Tuesday, and that's a big window of being out of school.
As you recall, when we were trying to develop a plan for all students to have basically the Burger King way, the Burger King education, if you will, have it their way, the idea was to retain our students, and we've done that. That's a good thing, you know, to the most part, but some students just aren't ready for that virtual or remote learning all the time, or at least three days a week. What we've done is our principals and teachers, and really the schools themselves, have reached out to those students to try to create additional scaffolds or connections with them, to try to either get them back to school, or put them on a different blend, or even come back face-to-face. I don't have all of the information, and I don't feel confident enough to tell you, hey, they've all come back. I know some haven't, but we felt like, right now, it's good to collect that data, to see the number of students who are having difficulty, to try to encourage them to come back second semester, or in a different capacity of blend. I just haven't been prepared to ask you to change that right now. We thought we'd gather a district ID.
Yeah, I mean, that's kind of why I pressed, it may be a loaded question, but I've seen some other school districts around the state and nationally start reconsidering some of the blended options, not do away with them, but maybe revise them some because of the performance issues that they're seeing. And I think everybody went into it with the same goal as we did, was to retain our students and give them as many options as possible. And that's really why I asked that question, is that it's obviously popped up on the radar.
Yes, it really did about week five. And so it's almost quietened down quite a bit since then, but, and I think it goes back to the teachers and the principals, really talking to the moms and dads and the students and encouraging them to come back, or change that option to Monday, Wednesday, Friday, or come back face-to-face. It would be a good question for us to answer and get the information to you about how many have come back face-to-face, quite a few have. Dr. Smith, or Ms. Tisher, anybody have that answer?
No.
I'm not sure I was looking for an answer, I was just kind of.
I think there's some elementary, I mean, we go into the elementaries, they kind of really all are bringing off, they're bringing a lot of their students back full-time face-to-face. So you were talking really to junior highs and high schools, and you talked a great deal about the number of students that we bring back at one time, across the country, those.
I think particularly at the high school level, we would want to look at collecting data on if we were to only go to one option, it could bring back an additional 300 to 500 students on those days, and so we would need to gather data on how we would run those additional, you know, through launches, because that's 500, so there would be data that we would need to gather, I think, at least.
Our biggest issue right now is substitutes, trying to get substitutes in to cover classes, and to help our staff members who are either on COVID leave for some reason or another. I think there were 56 that I saw today, 52 were out on sick days, and there were, I believe, nine or six personal days, I have that written down here. So we had, yeah, 114 total absent certified employees. So 6.7% of our certified staff were absent today, either COVID leave, out for sick or for personal. So 56 for COVID, 52 for sick, and six for personal. So our efforts are doubled down to try to encourage substitutes to continue to come. And I got to tell you, instructional facilitators, the assistant principals, principals, anybody that's loose in a building has picked up their bag of tools and gone to a classroom to substitute. I can't tell you the amazing character of your staff that have just stepped up to the plate. You have amazing educators in this district, and we're very fortunate to be part of that team, all of us.
I think that's a good note to end on. I would entertain a motion for all this meeting to adjournment.
Motion to adjourn?
There we go.
Thank you.
Everybody in favor of that?
All right.
All right, there we go. Let's go eat.